I'd like to convene the meeting. The Board has been in closed session for the purpose of negotiations, employment of employee, and approval of January 27th, 2015, and February 10th, 2015, closed session minutes. There are five Board members present, two absent. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have staff recognition tonight. This is our Shining Star Award, and we have ten teachers that we get to give this award to, and this is one of our favorite parts of the Board meeting. Okay, so I guess everyone can come up together? Is that how we like?
Yes.
Yeah. All Shining Star recipients, please come to the front. So Margaret, do you want to start the process? Thank you.
This is an excellent time, and let me just start off. I'm going to read the Sandberg contingency, and I will ask if you wouldn't mind just when I say your name, if you raise your hand so we all will know who you are. All were nominated by Linda Ferenbacher and Jeff Gale. In addition, Sarah Izzetto was nominated a second time by Kelly Fredrickson and Elizabeth Marcella. This year marked the first time Sandberg held a Spelling Bee and Geography Bee. These teachers, Megan Pagano, Christine Tapling, Kelly Frederick, and Sarah Izzetto. Did I say your name right, Sarah? Thank you. These teachers all played a role in making the two B's successful. Megan is one of the teachers who volunteered and participated in making Sandberg's first Geography Bee a success. She was pronouncer and was well-prepared for this role. Christine volunteered and supported both the Spelling Bee and Geography Bee at Sandberg. Christine was a judge for both B's. Kelly volunteered and participated by judging the Spelling Bee. In addition, Kelly is being recognized for another initiative being acknowledged tonight. Kelly provided her students with the service project of reading to younger students at Edison Elementary School. Sarah volunteered in the Spelling Bee by being the pronouncer. Sarah was well-prepared to take on this role. In addition, Sarah was nominated for a second award for the support she provides to students. She gives up her time regularly to support students in her English classes as well as work providing tier intervention through PBIS to support students based on their need. So thank you very much, Megan, Christine, Kelly, and Sarah.
I have the pleasure of recognizing Mary Greska, librarian at Edison, and Karen Westendorf, reading specialist at Sandberg, again nominated by Linda Ferenbacher and Jeff Gale. Mary initiated the idea for students from Sandberg to come and read to Edison students. She met with Sandberg teachers to coordinate the effort and to organize the time and staff. Karen is one of the teachers who involved her students in this project. Students became guest readers to second graders at Edison. Karen spent time choosing appropriate books for second graders. Mary and Karen. I have the additional pleasure of recognizing Donna Doer, librarian at Fisher, nominated by Jamie Gableman, and Sybil Siska. Donna is an excellent librarian. She goes above and beyond her job to help both teachers and students. She has had some all-school reading programs that were fun and engaging for students and families. Donna is always willing to go the extra mile for anyone at the school, including the book mobile and summer library hours. Donna.
And it is my pleasure to recognize Jackie Lawrence, secretary at Jackson School. She was nominated by Sandy Laskewitz, Alias Mrs. Laz, and Linda Schneider. Jackie is the nucleus of the school. She is a multitaster extraordinaire who deals with all situations that may arise with grace and a smile. She's on the front line of the school. She's the first person many see as they enter Jackson School. She puts forth a professional, competent, friendly first and last impression. Jackie is the go-to person for all things that arise. She keeps all the plates spinning. Congratulations, Jackie. And it's also my honor to recognize Lauren Pajman and Elizabeth Kornicker. Lauren is a sixth-grade English and math teacher at Sandberg, and Elizabeth is a seventh-grade math teacher at Sandberg. They were nominated by Kelly Frederick and Elizabeth Marcellis. Lauren and Elizabeth give up their time regularly to support students in their English and math classes, as well as work toward providing a Tier Two intervention through PBIS to support students based on their needs. In addition, they work with teachers to help the process run smoothly and fit the school. Congratulations, Lauren and Elizabeth.
Just before people take off, too, we have five other employees that we'd like to recognize this evening. These are employees that were recognized outside of our organization but are worthy of recognition at this meeting. In late December, Sandberg Middle School Band Director Rico Vanquez was recognized by the Chicago Educators Orchestra for his professional contributions, quote, "epitomizing the high standards of dedication to which music educators aspire." He presented at the 68th Annual Midwest Clinic, which is the Music Education Community's definitive international band and orchestra conference held annually in Chicago. So congratulations to Rico. Your community --
He's here.
Oh, Rico's here. Congratulations, Rico.
Did he just happen to be here?
Yeah, that's great. You can shake.
You're coming up.
I almost made it, actually. Thank you. Thank you very much.
York Community High School hosted the Western Suburban Conference Silver Division Gymnastics Meet on January 23rd, and at this meeting, girls' head coach Tammy Henderson was named the Conference Gymnastics Coach of the Year, while Steve Fedora was named Assistant Coach of the Year. Tammy is the PE teacher at Emerson, and Steve is the PE teacher at Jackson Elementary. Congratulations to both of those people. Earlier this month, Sandberg at Edison School psychologist Carrie Emmerichsen was awarded the Distinguished Service Award at the annual meeting of the Illinois School Psychologists Association. She is currently serving as the co-chair for the ISPA Committee for Professional Standards. This award was given to Carrie and her co-chair, who is a school psychologist and belvedere, for their diligence in work with maintaining ISPA as an approved provider for CPUs by the Illinois State Board of Education, as well as their work in helping Illinois school psychologists understand the changes from type 73 to PEL and the new regulations for maintaining our PELs. Carrie has been the co-chair of this committee for the past three years. Carrie has also been nominated as president-elect of ISPA for beginning in July of 2015. This is a three-year commitment, one as the president-elect, then president, then past president. Congratulations to Carrie. And finally, we want to honor Jessica Larson, who is also a school psychologist at Hawthorne and Lincoln Elementary Schools, who has become the chair of the Communications Committee for ISPA. As an early-career psychologist, this is an amazing opportunity for such a young person. As communications chair, Jessica supports the organization in sharing and disseminating information for the entire membership of ISPA across the state. Congratulations to Jessica also. And that wraps up our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, that was great. On to public comments. I don't have any cards. Does anyone have public comments? Moving on to Superintendent's Communication, Freedom of Information Act requests.
We had two Freedom of Information requests that we received. One request was for copies of all copier and printer leases throughout the district, which was granted, and one requesting specific communication, which we also granted. Our next agenda item under Superintendent Communication is a presentation we'd like to make this evening from the Teaching and Learning Department, English Language Learners Presentation. This presentation was given to the Board Subcommittee, and the Board felt so highly about the presentation that they asked that the presentation be presented at a full Board meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, yes. And to give that presentation for us tonight is our ELL Coordinator, Arianna Leonard. And so if Arianna could come up, and while she's coming up, we do have staff here as well that she'll ask to stand up at some point, but some staff that came as well who are ELL staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Am I hitting the right button? Oh, do I have to hold it? I'm sorry. Thank you so much. We do have some staff here that are ELL teachers and bilingual teachers, so if you want to stand up and be recognized for that, from Fisher Elementary School are here. Go ahead and stand up. All of our teachers who work with our ELL students do amazing things with our students in Elmhurst, so I'm really excited to share just a couple of updates about some of the things that are happening in Elmhurst. So the first thing I want to talk about a little bit are just some myths versus realities with regards to ELLs. The first myth is that most English language learners were born outside of the United States and that most ELL students are recent arrivals to the United States. In fact, the reality is that most English language learners were actually born in the United States. Recent census data shows that three-quarters of our students in school were actually born in the United States, so we have a lot of second and third-generation English language learners in our schools. With regard to first language instruction, the myth is that native language, the native language of children who come from Spanish-speaking countries like Mexico and Guatemala is Spanish, when the reality is that the native language of children from Central America and South America may not be Spanish. There are many tribal languages like Nahuatl in Mexico, which is spoken by over 10 million people, and Maya, which is spoken in Guatemala, Mexico, and Belize, that has 60 different dialects just of itself, that these children come to us not speaking Spanish, but they speak these tribal indigenous languages. So it's important for us to be cognizant of the fact that we can't really assume that just because they come from a Spanish-speaking country that they speak Spanish, which also presents challenges for our students. The next myth is with regards to second language acquisition. The myth is that once second language learners are able to speak reasonably fluently, their problems are likely to be over in school, and we know that this is not the case. The ability to speak a second language, especially in conversational settings, does not guarantee that the student has the academic language that they need to be successful in school, and that goes back to the research by Jim Cummins with BICS, Basic Interpersonal Communication Skills, versus CALP, which is that cognitive academic language proficiency. We often see our students pick up that BICS conversational language pretty quickly within the first three years of being here, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're out of the woods yet. They still have some work to do with that cognitive academic language proficiency, which the research shows takes about seven to 10 years to master. And with regards to academic success, the myth is that the academic success of English language learners is determined primarily by their ability to learn English, when we know that there are a lot of outside factors and influences that impact the success of students. Sure, the language is a big component, but the cultural messages received by the students is also very, very big. A lot of these students are acculturating from many different countries and learning our culture as well, along with the language, along with content, and the way that they view themselves is really impacted by the way the schools and the community view them. So we really need to be cognizant that we are sending the right messages to our students, that we're sending positive messages to our students. We understand that they're learning a lot of different things in order to be successful in school, and that we nurture that and celebrate their diversity at the same time. So let's take a look at Elmhurst ELL population. Before we get into the actual numbers of the students in Elmhurst, I do want to just kind of go through the two types of programs that we currently have here in Elmhurst. And the way that we identify students to be a part of these programs are through the Home Language Survey, which is given to, it's part of the registration packet. So if a student speaks another language at home, or there is another language spoken at home, we screen them for eligibility, and if they don't pass the screener, meaning they need some assistance with their English language, then they qualify to be an English language learner, and then they would be placed in one of these two programs. The TPI program is a transitional program of instruction, is offered in every school in Elmhurst. It has ELLs of various backgrounds, and it's when there's 19 or fewer students of the same language in a building. This provides intense English instruction and support through push-in services, pull-out services, and the goal of this program is to transition students out of ELL and into the mainstream classroom. The second program that we currently have here in Elmhurst is the TBE program, Transitional Bilingual Education. This is offered when there are 20 or more students of the same language in one school building. We currently have four buildings that offer TBE: Madison Early Childhood Center, Fisher Elementary, Churchville Middle, and York High School. With the TBE program, English and math must be taught in the native language, which is Spanish, and then social studies and science should be taught with native language support. The goal of TBE is also to transition students to mainstream, quote-unquote, mainstream classes to be immersed with everything else. So if we look at our trends in Elmhurst, these show the numbers of students that we've had over the last decade, and we are at our highest point right now. You can see that there have been some dips in numbers and then some pretty significant jumps. Those are due to some of the access testing cutoff scores being raised throughout the years. It could also mean that there are some immigrant groups coming in various pockets of locations, churches might be hosting. So there's a lot of different reasons as to why this could happen, as to why you see some of those significant jumps, but some of the ones that stand out to us are those access cutoff scores for proficiency. Here's a look at our enrollment by school. You can see the number of students at each of our elementary schools, middle and high school, and early childhood, so we have quite a population. And I do want to just recognize the fact that Elmhurst is proud to host, to be the home of 55 different languages and cultures here in Elmhurst, which is really exciting to see. The top five languages spoken in Elmhurst are Spanish, Malayalam, which is a language that is spoken in India, in the southwestern region of India, Polish, Urdu, which is a language spoken in India, Bangladesh, and Pakistan, and Tagalog, which is the native, the primary language of the Philippines. This is just a wordle to kind of give you a visual representation of the many different languages spoken here in Elmhurst, so you can kind of see what our students are, what they speak in our schools and in our community. Just to give you a couple of programmatic updates, we did develop a district-wide procedure for requesting translation and interpretation services. We currently use Albam and Associates for written translations and cross-cultural interpretation services for our oral interpretations. We are housing all of the requests through the Office for Learning and Teaching so that we can better meet the needs of the families. As you see, we have 55 languages that are represented in Elmhurst, and we want to make sure that we're reaching all of those families in our community. So this is going to help streamline and make sure that our communications are, oops, are able to be read by everybody in the community. We've been holding ELL team meetings this year to build camaraderie and develop a common vision for ELL. We've been meeting in elementary and secondary, but we will have some EC-12 meetings all day as we develop some more things for our team. Other updates, the program handbook will be updated. We're working to get some things digital online. Some of our forms are being updated, a website is being created, curriculum for parents as well. We also developed ELL IEP guidelines with a team of teachers, school psychologists, special ed administrators, to make sure that we have some clear-cut criteria and guidelines for students who may be recommended for special ed services, so that we can make sure that ELL is not the reason why they're being recommended for special ed, so that there are true needs there. So we've developed some clear-cut guidelines, and those are the people that were on the committee. We also are recipients of several grants for ELL. The LipLips grant is the language instruction programs for limited English proficient students, and the goal of this grant is to improve the education of ELLs, and it assists with the English language and meeting state academic content standards. We get this every year based on our numbers, and this is coming from the state. We also receive a Title III grant, which is a federal entitlement grant specifically designed to supplement the instruction for ELLs. There are a couple of major areas of the grant, which include instructional activities and professional development, and this is also based on numbers, and the main purpose of this is that we supplement instruction and not supplant. So we provide additional resources, supplemental language learning programs, professional development. Some of the initiatives this year are the Imagine Learning Pilot that we have at Fisher Elementary in Emerson, the purchase of the Elevation Database, which will really transform how we look at ELL data in the district, and some professional learning for teachers. We had many teachers attend the annual bilingual conference in December. The TBE and TPI is kind of embedded into the LipLips, but we do get some funding for our students who are in the TBE and TPI programs. It's state-funded, and it's based on our number of students. I do want to celebrate some of the work that the team has done this year. We have amazing teachers out there in our schools working with our students, and I do just want to take a minute to celebrate some of the amazing things that are going on. Some celebrations from Field Elementary School. Our ELL resource teacher, Deana Morazzo-Capua, was recently, received her National Board Certification in English as a New Language, and Deana, along with Valerie Baxter, a second-grade teacher at Field, were actually presenters at the annual bilingual conference, and they had a packed house, and they presented on math, build math centers, and how it impacts ELLs. Fisher Elementary School held on Heritage Night last Friday, and that celebrates the culture and diversity of the school. They had dances, food, art, cultural games, activities, a silent auction. Darwin Strilo is one of the teachers who kind of spearheads it, but all of the teachers were really involved and put a lot of hard work into making that a huge success. Here are some pictures from the Heritage Night that you can see with the teachers dancing, students dancing, cultural dances. The pop, or the, yeah, the two-liter pop bottles were research projects that students did to research a country, and then they created a pop bottle person to, with traditional dress from those countries, so it's really great. York High School during the Institute Day had several ELL presentations. ELL teachers and students presented to the staff during the last Institute Day in January. Jessica Knoll, the department head, Diana Oliveros, and Lorenzo Rubio gave presentations to staff about working with ELLs, and then we had five students from Guatemala who presented on their own home country in Guatemala. The presentation was both in Spanish and English. The students translated for their peers, who were not quite ready to speak in English, in front of a room of teachers, to share information about their home country, their school, and their experiences about coming to the United States. It was really amazing to see these kids share their experiences and to learn about the types of things that helped them in school, and the teachers were so engaged, and it was a wonderful presentation. Other Institute Days presentations, presentations that happened this, in January, Marta Coty, she's the ELL resource teacher at Lincoln Elementary School, did a presentation on second language acquisition for the staff at Lincoln, and then Rebecca Villalobos and Amanda Mihak are teachers at Churchville Middle School, and they presented to staff on ELL strategies in the classroom. So I did just want to share some of that, because our teachers are really doing some amazing work. Just an update with the Bilingual Parents Advisory Council, the BPAC. We are required by state to hold at least four meetings per year. The members should include all stakeholders, and the majority of members must be parents, and the parents have their own board. We have had three meetings so far this year, the first at Fisher, the second at Churchville, the third at York, and our last meeting will be at Fisher in April. We're really trying to figure out ways to get more parents involved in these meetings so that we can empower them to take an active role in their child's education. So we're always looking for ideas and suggestions on how we can increase parent participation, if we want to have the meetings monthly at one location, if ELL teachers would come and present, how we can market, and any other ideas. We're still open to brainstorming on how we can really make our BPACs more robust and more active in our community. Quick dual-language update, we're in the process of adding new members to the dual-language study team. More than half of the members from last year have since left the district, so we will continue the work that was done with that team, but we do need to solicit some more members. The next piece is also the community engagement piece of the dual-language project, so that we can really start informing the community and getting some feedback as to what dual-language is all about and how it can work here in Elmhurst. Some of the things that we'll be doing, we'll be making recommendations on a timeline, an action plan, and an implementation plan, and then we will be working with the Board for logistics and possibilities where, how, lottery, what type of application process we want to have, et cetera. So that is still coming in the works, and we still have some work to do. A little bit of talk about the district KPIs. We've had some discussion about the district KPIs with regards to student achievement in ELLs and the types of data that we were looking at that. We didn't really feel that looking at state-standardized test data was an accurate representation of how our students are growing and learning English, so we're looking at other data sets to see how we can represent the growth that our students are making with not only their English language, but their content, meeting content standards. Access is one data set we're looking at, but we are looking to explore some more so that we can really focus on the growth of our kids. And just a little update of the SEAL of Biliteracy. What the SEAL is, it's an award given by a school, a district, or a county office that recognizes students who have studied and attained proficiency in more than one language. This is in collaboration with the World Language Program, and it's open to all students. It's really interesting, because there's only eight states that have adopted this so far, and Illinois is one of those eight. There are currently in the works, I think, seven more states that are considering There are currently in the works, I think, seven more states that are considering, and then a couple handful more states that are taking it to their state legislation to see if this would be something that they do. But basically, our students would graduate with a SEAL of Biliteracy on their diploma, on their transcripts, to show that they are proficient in more than one language in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So what does this mean for our district? If this is something that we are interested in, which I think we are, we would need to adopt the SEAL of Biliteracy, generate some criteria for that recognition, and create some pathways to the SEAL. Students would need to sit for some sort of language proficiency oral test, as well as a written and reading test in the target language, along with, in English, to show that they were biliterate. So English for our ELL students who might be able to get this SEAL, and then any of the other languages that our students are studying. Some things to consider are the cost of exams and some external communication plans, but the next steps would be to form a committee to generate that criteria and recommend some of our suggestions to the board. With that, I tried to, I'm sorry if I went a little too fast, that, are there any questions, comments? Yes?
I have a question about the ELL students at Madison. Does a student, once identified as ELL, qualify for full-day preschool at Madison? Or how, how does the program work? Are there kids there that have been identified as ELL, and then that's?
Yeah, there are-
What age do they come in, and how?
They come in at all ages, and the students that enter Madison are also screened for-
Well, at least, they're at least three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so three to five?
Yep. And so depending on their language and their level of proficiency, they have some classes that are fully bilingual, where the teacher speaks Spanish to the students the majority of the time, and then supplements with some English to develop some of that native language foundation. And then they also have some teachers that are pushing into other classrooms, because there are several languages spoken at Madison.
I'm just curious how these kids are identified, because obviously, when a student enrolls kindergarten, they take the questionnaire that you said.
Same, it's the same process at Madison.
But, I mean, how does a kid that's living in Elmhurst even know? I mean, you know, I know that that is offered. I just am curious about how the community becomes aware of it, how kids show up at the door of Madison. I don't know if you guys have an answer to that. It's just-
Yeah, I think it's not really a language program at Madison. It's just, it's students who happen to be English language learners.
So they're not at Madison because they were identified ELL?
Correct. No, they're at Madison for the reasons they're at Madison, but they are also identified as English language learners.
Thank you. Oh, okay, okay, I understand.
So it's not a separate language program. We just happen to have quite a few English language learners that are there.
Oh.
It's part of Project FINE, to early intervention for students at three and four-year-olds, both of which can be at-risk factors, but also ELL students who need language intervention early. So it's a combination of both.
Thank you very much for a wonderful presentation. Very thorough and comprehensive. I know that I was at, I'm a school liaison for Fisher, and so I was at the BPAC meeting, and it was great to see the progress that's been made, expanding to other schools and more comprehensive in the district over the last several years. So that's wonderful. And a lot of parents were there, so that's great.
Yeah, we're trying to get more. So it's always a process, but we are open to any suggestions, and like I said, if we need to just continue to have it at one central location, but we are pleased. We did, at that meeting that you were at, we did have representation from elementary, middle, and high school, so that was kind of exciting.
Yeah. And I think that you gave a sense, but can you just help us understand a little bit more about getting a sense of how we accommodate 55 languages?
It's, it's a really difficult process, especially when there are those, you know, low or high-frequency languages that we don't have people that speak, you know, Urdu in the classroom. So there are a variety of ways. With TPI, we do push-in services with the ELL resource teacher, who offers language support and co-plans and teaches with the teacher. They also do some pull-out interventions, where they can provide some intensive English instruction for those kids. Our ELL resource teachers are certified to assist with that second language acquisition piece. Just strategies within the classroom that the classroom teacher can do with providing accommodations, modifications, scaffolding, differentiating. So there's a lot of different things that we do.
I just think it's, it's great to kind of give us a sense of that in the community as they watch. The other question was around, okay, so somewhat similar. If you look at the graph that shows the ELL across the district at the different buildings, that's, it's the same sort of concept at each of the buildings, right?
Yeah, except for at Fisher, they have the bilingual, so those kids are in a classroom with a bilingual teacher who provides instruction in Spanish and in English. We have that at Churchville and York as well. But everywhere else, it's, it's the transitional program of instruction, where they have a resource teacher who pushes in and pulls out.
Last question. I really liked when you talked about student growth, and looking at it more than just what the standardized testing is, so that you can really get a sense of the growth. And I know that that probably links to, the last time we heard about ELL, we were talking about access and exiting the access program, and that seems to be a really good, I'm sure the metrics that you're using for that growth play hand-in-hand with making that cleaner, right? I guess is the best way to say it.
Yes, but we're not exiting access. When you say exiting access, we're not-
Thank you.
Exiting the program through access. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you again, a great presentation, although you didn't provide the questions this time.
Oh, the math questions.
The math questions this time. I noted that. They were, they were fun. My question, you talked a little bit about the dual-language study team. Can you expand on that a little bit more and kind of talk about what that group, it was great that you put all the people that were participating in that group to kind of help us, remind us what that-
We currently don't have the team established yet. I think the names that you saw were the ELL IEP Guideline Committee that developed those criteria for special education.
Okay.
Yeah, the dual-language study team is not completely formed yet. We still have to get some applications out, so that people who are interested in, you know, participating in the study team can look at what was done last year, because there was a lot of work done in the last couple of years, so that we can move forward with it.
And is that, what is the concept of that would move forward to a dual-language?
Yeah, to recommending a dual-language program here in Elmhurst.
I'm sorry, Rita. Well, this was just kind of along the dual-language question. Because I remember a few years ago, we kind of talked about a few schools, communities that have been moving that way, and since it's been a couple of years since we've talked about it, or since I've talked about it, I'm sure you talk about it all the time. Is that still a trend? Is, are there still other communities, other schools that are moving to the dual-language program?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a trend, actually, nationally. It's, yeah, it's catching on. And with that SEAL of Biliteracy that we adopted in Illinois, I believe you'll see more and more of those popping up, because it will provide students the opportunity to start their language learning early, so that they can attain that SEAL and put that on their transcripts and their diplomas, and make them more marketable.
And from what I remember, it was an advantage to English language learners, as well as native English speakers.
Absolutely.
That the scores and the-
It's a win-win.
The studies showed that, yeah, all students on both sides did much better in the long run.
Yep, yeah, there's been research from, like, Collier in Virginia for years and years and years. They've got decades worth of research that shows that students who were in a dual-language program outperform monolingual students on every test under the sun.
And in most communities where they adopt dual-language programs, it's usually in high demand, isn't it? Isn't there usually a waitlist or a lottery, like you said?
Yeah, and that's something we'll have to figure out if, you know, when we decide to move forward with that, what type of system we will have for applications, if there's going to be a lottery process. We don't know what kind of, and that's part of that community engagement piece that we're going to embark on as the next step, to kind of see what kind of interest is out there, what kind of, you know, feedback do we need, or do we get from the community, so that we can certainly be prepared for if we have too many kids apply, or if we don't have enough, how we're going to market it. So there's still a lot of work to be done.
I had a question about the access test. You mentioned that the cut scores were raised. Was that something that we did internally in our district?
No, that's a state, a state requirement.
Mandate.
So it was in, I think, 2006, when the cut scores were a 4.0 for the composite, and I can get those for you in just one second. And then every year, they raised them. Our cut scores are now at the, so yeah, in 2006, all they needed to have was a composite score of a 4.0. And then in 2010, they, the state raised that to a 4.8 composite and a reading/writing composite of 4.2. And that's kind of when you saw that big jump from nine to 10. And then in 2014, they raised it again to a composite of 5.0 with reading and writing composite of 4.8, I'm sorry, 4.2 reading and a 4.2 writing. So they raised it again just recently. So that might explain why we see some more kids not exiting the program, if you will, because the state felt that, in looking at the data and looking at the tests, that our students still needed some more support, and that we couldn't call them proficient at the 4.0, maybe more again at the 5.0.
Did we get more funding when the state raises the cut scores for ELL, the ELL program?
In terms of numbers, yes, because our students would then still be classified as ELL, and we get, we generate funding for those students who are classified as ELL.
Okay. Okay, so the last thing I had was, this is a great example of how we're trying to bring topics from the Learning and Teaching Committee to the board meeting, and I think it's great, and I want to continue this. So thanks, thanks so much for doing this. This is really helpful.
Thanks for having me. It's been great.
Oh, I'm sorry, John, do you have a question? I didn't, go ahead.
Just a few things. Can you talk, first of all, just to follow up on the funding? We talked about last night about categorical funding and how it never quite meets the costs, and I'm wondering if you could give us a little more information about how the funding works and does it meet cost?
So, yeah, that's a good question. So the way that the LIPLEPS funding works is based on our student enrollment. They're actually going to be pulling our data from CISA on March 2nd for next year's ceiling calculations, and that is based on students who are classified as ELL and who receive moderate or high services. And so those students generate a certain dollar amount, depending on their grade cluster and what level of service that they need. And so the state identifies English language learners in three levels of service. There's low service, which means they get five or less periods of instructional support per week, and a period is about 30 minutes. The moderate is five to nine periods per week, and then high is 10 or more periods per week. And so those generate additional funding for those students. And so we have used in the past the LIPLEPS funding to provide additional FTE for teachers to work with those students in the buildings. Title III is separate, and that's a federal grant that we get. It's an entitlement grant, so we get that because we have students in the, in the district. And that's just, again, based on just total number of students. It doesn't go by the levels of service like the Illinois ones do. But the Title III grant is part of the No Child Left Behind ESEA decision, so we get that money from the federal grant, and that is to provide supplemental support for ELL, so that comes in the form of, you know, additional resources for kids, supplemental language programs, like what we're doing at Fisher and Emerson with Imagine Learning, providing professional development, providing anything above and beyond what the LEA provides for, for all students, we can use Title III for. So we've, every year, we do a needs assessment as part of the grant to determine what's working, what's not, what can we move forward with. I mean, it's, so it's kind of an ever-changing thing, depending on the needs of the district at the time. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's very helpful, thank you. Because I note that, on your chart, you had 543 of our 8300 students are receiving services, which would be about six and a half percent of our population and growing. I'm just wondering if you had a sense of the number of students who have exited a program, and we've already heard how the problems with exiting too early are, are being addressed with increased standards and so forth, but if you had a sense of how many kids have exited and are still in District 205 schools?
Well, and what we do is, when they exit, we also monitor for two years after that. So there is a monitoring piece that comes after students attain proficiency on the access test. And in that monitoring time, we can always re-enroll them back into the ELL program if we find that they are really struggling academically, if they need additional supports. And, you know, parents can also request that if they want, if they feel that their child needs some additional support with the English language development piece, we can certainly rescreen them and see if they still need some, some additional help. So there is that two-year monitoring piece that we also look at, and that helps us determine whether or not students are really getting what they need, you know, because a test is a test, and so there's just, there's so many other factors to take into consideration.
The only other thing I'd, I'd ask, this idea, I mean, has a lot of merits to it, the idea of a dual-language program. And I'm just wondering if it is something that should be flushed out at, with the task force team, or is it something that can be forwarded to some of the folks that are getting involved in strategic planning? I know we're putting together this moderation team, is it moderated facilitation team? Or, or you are, yeah. So, the community engagement, and to make sure that, you know, it's brought up. If they determine to follow, great. If they don't, they don't, so.
It'll be going to community engagement, was the, the thinking, and because there's, you know, a component of education that has to occur, what is a dual-language program, so that our community can completely understand a dual-language program. And to Emily's point, it's good for all students, you know, and we really need to have that part of the engagement process, so that we can have that education part to it, where people then, our community can then really grapple with the idea and ask the right questions, so that as we move forward, we have the best program possible.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Continuing with teaching and learning, we're going to turn this over now to Charles Brandell, and he's here to give you an update on park assessment. Park assessment will begin next week at the elementary level, followed by middle school the following week and high school, and Charles has been devoting his life to park over the past three months, at least.
Don't say that.
This has taken an absurd amount of time, let's just put it that way. It's, and it's constantly being updated. We are constantly getting changes in the park. So this is, I will, the caution here is, this is the latest and greatest, but it's probably not the final, so. Charles?
And thank you for that intro. It has been quite a, quite a time-consuming endeavor and, and constantly changing. So the last time we gave a full board update was almost exactly a year ago. So the intent tonight is to tell you really what has changed, since we sort of laid out, here's our plans for how we're going to address this, what's, what's changed over the last 12 months, as well as give you a sense of where we are right now going into testing that'll start next week. So starting with what's changed, first of all, one of the things we talked about last year was, there's two four-week windows. There's a four-week window coming up, starting next week, for the performance-based assessment, and then there's another end-of-year assessment, which is another four-week window. And the state had originally scheduled those, so that the first one overlapped spring break, and the second one overlapped both AP testing and final exams, which looks something like that. That's almost the exact slide we showed you last time. The state ended up giving us a little bit of flexibility. They've allowed districts to move either or both of those windows a week in either direction, if it gave us some relief or made things a little bit easier for us. We've decided to move both of those windows a week earlier. So what that does for us is it gives us the full four-week window for this first testing session, for the performance-based assessment, which gives schools a little bit more flexibility in how they're going to schedule. Dave mentioned that our elementaries are starting next week. Typical schedules in the elementary buildings are, they're spending one full week testing third grade, one full week testing fourth grade, one full week testing fifth grade, and then that last week gives them some chance to do makeups, or for kids with IEPs that had extended time, that were more difficult to schedule, those kinds of things. So they really needed that full four weeks, which is part of our reasoning for moving it out of spring break. And then the last testing window, by moving it forward, at least pulls it somewhat out of the AP and exam schedule, although there's another change that actually helps even more with that, but pulls it out of the final exam week for students at York. So another major change, the state originally mandated that we test everyone in grades three through- three through eight. But then at the high school, one of the shifts with Park is it's not actually, and I'm going to speak about it, I'm going to slip and say testing juniors, testing freshmen, like we're testing a whole grade level. But one of the changes with Park is we're not, at the high school, we're not testing whole grade levels now. We're testing students that are in specific courses. So the original mandate from the state was that we had to test students that were in an Algebra II class and students that were in English III class, which that's mostly juniors, but not entirely, especially the Algebra II would have spanned all the way from sophomores up through seniors. But primarily, that would have been testing our juniors. Many districts across the state voiced concerns about that with the state board, primarily because if we're testing juniors in Park, juniors are also taking ACT, juniors are taking a lot of AP exams, and they were really just getting hammered in the spring with test after test after test. In December, the state relented and gave us some flexibility on that and let us test Algebra I and English I. And we took advantage of that opportunity. We had to rework and re-figure and, and again, part of that time consumption to be able to make that happen on the state's schedule. But we won't be testing those junior level, those primarily junior-level classes at York. We'll be testing students in Algebra I and in English IX, English IX honors. So primarily freshmen will be testing.
But just to add to that, just so you understand, it's not all freshmen.
Correct.
So.
Yes, because it is by course. It's not by grade level at the high school anymore.
So just with, with the population of freshmen that were, of course, it's a brand-new test, but it is not a cross-section of all of our freshmen. And score-wise, it's, it was not to our advantage to do it that way, but given all the other options, we decided this was the best way to handle it.
And then is a good, does that make sense? Because that is a good point.
Well, what's the percentage of freshmen that are taking Algebra? It's low, right?
That are taking Algebra I, so that is our, primarily our Algebra AB students. It's about half of the freshman class. Another piece that's changed, we had to, and David and his team had to spend a lot of time putting information about our technology infrastructure into a system that was designed by the state so they could decide how well-equipped we were to provide testing online. We ended up getting their stamp of approval that we should be able to test 100% of our students online, given the resources that we had available. They did give us a little bit of wiggle room within that, that we could test some proportion, some portion of our students using pencil paper. And we've decided that English I test, or the English one, that Algebra I test at the high school, that we're going to do that pencil and paper rather than doing it online. All of our other tests are going to be online. So all of our third through eighth grade tests and the English IX tests are going to be online. The Algebra I test, the reason we did that, it, it does a couple of things. One, it makes the scheduling and the disruption to the high school, it minimizes disruption of the high school schedule. Because of the availability of computer labs, if they were going to give both the English and the Algebra tests online, they would be tying up most of their computer labs for a big bulk of that window. By doing it pencil paper, we can have every student take it at the same time in their classrooms like they have done in the past with PSE or ACT. So it allows us to shorten up the impact on York's schedule. The other piece is, and if you've looked at any of the online Park tests, some of the math tools take a lot of getting used to, and especially the, the calculator simulation that's on the high school test. And, and we felt that it would be a better opportunity for our students if they could use the tools, use their own calculators that they're accustomed to. All right. So what have we been doing in the last year? And I want to start with students, because part of what we're, we're trying to do is change some of the conversation around this, that, that we're, you know, I used to hear when I'd hear teachers in, on curriculum nights, those kinds of things, talk about, you know, we're getting students ready for ISAT. We really are trying to remove that phrase from our vocabulary and not just substitute we're getting students ready for Park. Our mission, our vision, don't say anything about getting kids ready for the state test. So we're trying to kind of rethink that and remove that, take this change as an opportunity to remove that from our vocabulary. We have been working hard over the last several years to align our curriculum, to make adjustments to our curriculum, to align all of our assessment systems. We switched over to the Common Core MAP two years ago. We've been working to align all of our common assessments to the Common Core standards so that we have that kind of ongoing feedback about how students are doing in their attainment of those standards. And that work continues to go on. So we want to get away from saying we're getting students ready for Park, but we also want students to be able to show what they know and show what they can do in this kind of testing environment. And it is a very different testing environment than they're used to. So a piece of what we have asked teachers to do is there are some online tutorials that show students how those online tools work. And honestly, lets them get some of the play out of their system. Again, if you've gone in, the protractor and the ruler are great fun to spin around. And almost everybody that pulls them up, they sit there and they spin the ruler around and spend a couple of minutes doing that. So we can get that out of their system. They know where the buttons are. They know how to navigate. And beyond that kind of distraction piece, there are some pieces of it that really are just not intuitive. You know, honestly, the first time I logged in, I spent about 30 seconds. I answered the first question and then scrolled down to the bottom looking for the next button. It's not there. It's not in the bottom right-hand corner like almost every other webpage. It's in the upper left-hand corner. So, you know, until you look around, until you know that. So we have spent time familiarizing students with the environment so that that doesn't get in the way of them showing what they know and what they're able to do. All right. Systems and staff. David and his team have been working tirelessly, you know, working with principals on scheduling where their rooms are going to be, where they're going to be testing, making sure that they have adequate wireless capacity. They have been setting up our caching servers. The way the Park system works, we actually have the test content downloaded and stored locally on some of our own servers so that while students are taking the test, their computers are just communicating with those internal servers on our network. And there's a lot more bandwidth inside our network than there would be if the student computers had to go all the way out to Pearson's servers over the internet. So they've been working to set those up. And we have been staging increasingly complex infrastructure trials since January to test those systems out and to make sure that the right pieces are in place and things are talking to each other the way they should be. Our teachers and administrators have been going through training. We've had four different administrator trainings in the last month. We use the February Late Start to train teachers. And we've also been designing our systems, you know, given the constraints that Park places on us, you know, how can we design our systems to have the least impact and the least stress for especially teachers and students as possible? All right. Switching over to what are the impacts, as much as we've tried to minimize them? We are going to lose instructional time. Roughly, it's twice as much instructional time as we used to lose for ISAT and PSAE. It varies by grade level, but it's a significant impact just on the hours that students are spending testing. Now, it is important to realize, though, that we talk about this four-week window. Students aren't testing every day for four weeks. For the performance-based assessment, there are five parts to it. So students will test on five days within that four-week period. So I don't want to misrepresent that it's four weeks of testing, but it is twice as much testing as they've had in the past. It also, because of the way we were going to have to rotate students through computer labs, remove access to that instructional technology for many of our elementaries for the entire eight weeks of the two four-week windows. It's a little bit less of an impact at the middle schools and the high school, but still it's a significant impact to the availability of those resources for instruction. They're going to be used for assessment instead. Our current systems, and we've talked about this with the Learning and Teaching Subcommittee and the KPIs, you know, there are a lot of systems that we've had in place based around our own assessments. And the amount of testing that Park entails has forced us to make some changes to that. We are not spring MAP testing this year. Because again, it would have been four weeks of Park, two weeks of MAP, and then another four weeks of Park. And we just didn't think that that was fair. But removing that measure means we have to change a lot of the systems that we already had in place because that MAP measure was a key piece of some of those systems. And going back to, you know, Dave's introduction, I think a big piece of this is just the opportunity cost. This has been a big time sink for a lot of people this year. There are a lot of things that we would have been doing that we were not able to do that had to be postponed because of the time that this has taken up. And on to your questions.
So if you can, can you give us a sense of a life of a student during these four weeks of Park testing, life of a teacher?
You know.
Kind of alluded to it, but.
Here's what I, I would like to say, I think we have, and the principals have done a fantastic job of making schedules work, that we've tried to minimize that impact to a student's life. That being said, using an elementary school as an example, you know, a third grader will have a week of testing. They will have a test every day for a week. The tests are longer than what they're used to. So they will come to school in the morning and there will be an 80, 90-minute session where they are going down to the computer lab, starting the test, you know, sitting in front of that test for 70, 80 minutes. And that's going to be that large chunk of their day. You know, because they are in the computer lab, other students can't do the things that they would normally have been doing in the computer lab. So even those weeks that students aren't testing, there are impacts on other classes because the things that they normally would have been using, the laptops in their classroom, because that's another piece. We've had to kind of cull laptops from classrooms and put them together so that the elementaries have more than one testing location. So other classes that would have been using those laptops as, as part of a math center work, those aren't available to them during those two four-week windows. So, you know, it's probably similar to the impact on a, on a student's day of ISAT testing in the past, just twice as much.
At the same time, I think, you know, the way we phrase things and the way, people are getting the wrong message. They think their kid is testing for four weeks straight. They think it's, even though you said it a week, that it's a whole week. I mean, I know it's twice as much testing as it was, but I think every time we talk about the four weeks, we emphasize that your kid is not sitting in a test for four weeks. I, I really think there's a lot of like scare tactics or people are just taking a little bit of information. And then around the community, I keep hearing, you know, just these crazy numbers of testing. I agree. It's twice as much as it was, but let's just try to keep, keep it clear what it actually.
Yeah. And that is why I tried to make that distinction, because I know that impression is out there. Although it's kind of a fine line because it, it does have a major impact on, on our systems and our schools and how they're operating in the spring. So, you know, we're trying to walk a fine line because we don't want to misrepresent it as two four-week windows, the kids are doing nothing but testing, you know, for 40 days in the spring, when that's not true. But there are impacts on our systems for those 40 days. And quite honestly, for the last year leading up to those 40 days.
The flip side of that was, you know, a life of a teacher. But, so basically, they just have to readjust their springtime instruction from what they used to do.
They, well, they, they are losing more days. So, you know, again, if you say twice as much, so, you know, they're losing probably an extra week of some type of lesson. You know, because you're basically taking out the morning for a full week, but you're doing it twice instead of once. And again, the other impact and the other adjustment they have to make is they have, you know, they have centers in their classroom, they're using the laptops in their classroom, and we had to pull those out so that we could do assessments. They have things that are tied to their curriculum that they are doing in the computer labs that are not available to them now.
Just to differentiate something else here, it's my understanding that the Park is really a better test, just horribly distracted by the terrible top-down, one-size-fits-all implementation on the schools of Illinois by the state. Maybe you could talk about some of the things that you're going to get out of Park in terms of data and some of the lessons we might learn that will be useful to send back to the rulemakers in the state to perhaps give more flexibility. So data and then, and then lesson, what lessons do you think we might learn?
Yeah. And that is, that's another distinction that I usually try to incorporate. You know, this, this really is, we've been complaining about ISAT for years. And this really is the kind of test that we have been asking for. We've been asking for something that digs deeper into student skills, that gives us better information about, you know, a deeper understanding of math and English. And, and that was the intent of Park. And it's like a lot of things that, these ideas, they start and they're sort of formulated and initial plans are made with the best of intentions by people that don't actually have to make them work. And that's where that, that whole difficulty comes in of, you know, let's, let's come up with this, this great test. Well, it turns out that great test is going to take more time, you know? And let's do it online because we can do these online tools. Well, schools aren't equipped. They don't have the resources to do that. So I usually do try to couch this in, you know what, this, this, in a lot of ways, is what we've been asking for. And there are going to be a lot of growing pains. There are going to be things that, that we have to work through. You know, I, I still am hopeful that there's good that's going to come out of this two or three years down the road. Now, the, the other question that you had, can I speak to the data that we're going to get? I wish I could. We have no idea what we're going to get. You know, the, the latest is, again, eventually, we should get results from Park before the end of the school year when students take it. Because if it's online, we have those, you know, the, the first window has some things that are human graded, but that's early enough in the school year, they should be able to get that done. And then the end of year is all machine graded. So we should be able to get those results before the end of the school year, which helps us plan in advance of the next school year and also helps us gauge how well we've done during that school year. This first year, right now, they're telling us, don't expect any results back before next October. They've got a lot of statistical work. They've got to do all the norming. They've got a, a lot of things they have to do to make sense. They haven't set cut scores for, you know, what's going to be a meet standards on Park. So honestly, we don't know what kind of data we're going to get back yet. I hope it's fine-grained enough that it really does prove useful to us. I hope it's not a, okay, this kid's scale score is 255 and good luck actually using that to help you guide instruction or judge how well your programs are doing. I hope we get more, more fine-grained data than that, but I can't speak to it because they haven't told us what we're going to get yet.
My last question, you, you might not be able to answer this because, you know, things are in flux. But, so you gave us a snapshot of this year. Do we have any idea next year? I know it, but I thought I would ask. Because ideally, what they were saying is they wanted Park assessments for all students, and we're not there.
Yeah. What, you know, I, I guess I can speak to that. I was just going to say, no, I can't. You know, so many things have changed just in the last six months. I, I can't tell you what the state's plans are, which their plans are that next, really the big difference for next year is that instead of just testing that Algebra I and English I at the high school, we would be testing all three grade levels at the high school. So we'd be testing Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II, as well as English I, English II, and English III. So it'd be an expansion at the high school. The third through eight would stay the same because we're already testing all of the third through eighth grade students in both ELA. third through eighth grade students in both ELA and math. You know, the other piece of this is Park was originally designed not to just be these end-of-year, or was originally envisioned to not just be these end-of-year accountability assessments, that there was going to be a beginning-of-the-year test, and there was going to be a mid-year test that would be optional for districts, but that they could use, much in the way that we use like our map assessments now, to help give them a sense at the beginning of the year of where students are, help us plan for those students, help us form groups, do those kinds of things. Then a mid-year checkpoint, so we could see, are those things working, are we on the right track, before we got to those end-of-year assessments. Those earlier optional pieces are being field tested now. Although honestly, from what I hear, I, nobody's, at least nobody in the suburbs is actually field testing them. Because the field testing window, if you wanted to sign up for field testing, it was the two weeks in between the big park windows. So you had to sign up to give your kids more tests in those two weeks that you weren't testing kids. So honestly, I don't know of any, at least any of the districts that have assessment directors that I communicate with, that had any interest in doing that.
Thank you. One last question was around, since this is so technology-intensive, back to a funding, is the state helping any district fund the technology, infrastructure to support park testing?
Not to my knowledge.
If I could just interject, about the closest thing that comes to it, and this is federal, is they just changed the, the federal E-rate rules, starting July 1st, to provide some, some funding for the infrastructure technology, you know, like switches and so on, to connect to the internet, but that's, that's not state-funded, and, and it's really-
And it's not related to Park at all?
It's not related to Park, but that, but the shift from the government was to recognize that access to, you know, access is important, and that's why they're shifting the emphasis, but it's not a direct from state or related to Park directly, but it's for building out the infrastructure for access.
It'll affect us, but I don't want, I don't want people to be misled and think this is an attempt to reinforce and, and support districts in their technology initiative because of the Park assessment or the state moving to technology. This is a separate issue.
Right, it is, and it doesn't, doesn't apply to devices at all, that's just the-
The answer is no. No state funding.
Yeah, there hasn't been-
To support the heavy technology requirements for Park assessment.
There hasn't been any support, their, their only support in that same vein was basically giving people flexibility, use the pencil paper.
Is their response.
Last question. What's the rationale for having a performance-based test, and then three weeks later doing an end-of-year assessment? Is learning supposed to happen in that three-week window between the two testing windows, or, what's the rationale for that?
Yes, I think in the, the performance base was, was set to be given at three-fourths of the school year, and is designed to be given at three-fourths of the school year. So it isn't, it isn't necessarily based on, okay, here's the end-of-year goals, and we're just going to test them on those when they've still got a couple of months of the school year left. Honestly, part of the rationale is that because the performance-based assessment is just that, it, it's writing-intensive, it's in math, it's problem-solving, it's showing your work, it's writing out and explaining how you approach the problem. And those kinds of questions, at least right now, still need to be graded by some human somewhere. They need to be human graded. They can't just be plugged into a machine and graded, and that takes time. And one of Park's, again, the way it's envisioned, is that districts eventually should be able to get all of the results before the end of the school year. And the only way to do that, if you are having portions of the test graded by people somewhere, is to make sure that testing happens early enough in the year, so that stuff can get graded before the end of the year. The, the end-of-the-year test is those end-of-year standards, and it's more the content standards, it's more reading comprehension, can students do calculations, and it's all things, not necessarily multiple choice. It can be fill-in-the-blank, there's drag-and-drop, there's, you know, you can make a graph, you can build a graph and click where the dots are, but everything on the end-of-the-year test can be graded by the machine without any human intervention.
Okay, great, thank you. Approval of board meeting minutes, are there any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes? All right, the minutes, there are four sets of minutes, they'll stand approved as presented. Okay, superintendent's consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
The administration is requesting that item E, Policy Reference Educational Subscription, Section 4, Operational Services be removed for further discussion this evening.
Is there any other item to remove? Okay. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item E.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, F, G, and H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does we need a roll call vote?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent, Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Okay, that's five ayes, no nays, two absents, the motion carries. Okay, I need a motion for item E to be approved.
I move that the Board of Education accept as a first reading the revisions to policies 4:45, insufficient fund checks and debt recovery, 4:110, transportation, 4:120, food services, which will become effective at the time of their adoption and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, Section 4, Operational Services.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to draw your attention to policy 4:110, Operational Services on the Heading of Transportation. If you go down the page, this policy was put before the policy committee, and we have recommended changes, and this handout is in front of you this evening. Highlighted in red, under pre-trip and post-trip vehicle inspection, the, the Board Policy Committee had recommended that, in the second line, test the two-way radio and, and this is in red, or any other communication system. It, it was broad. After this was discussed at the Board Policy Committee and brought forward, we received a press update, and what we found is that there is specific language attached to the state statute that requires that section to read, and that's on the second page that we got you, test the two-way radio or cellular radio telecommunication device. And it's required statute language that that be in the policy. And so, the administration is recommending, for this first reading, that the board adopt and amend the policy to read in that second line, or cellular radio telecommunication device. You can all imagine what that is, so, I would guess.
Did the motion we just make include the new language? He asks knowingly.
We would, we would have to amend this policy as a first reading to, to say any cellular-
I would make a motion to amend my motion, that we use the better language from the Illinois General Assembly in this matter. Second my motion to amend.
So you made a motion, I need a second.
I second the amended motion.
Okay.
The amendment of the motion.
Now, we need a voice vote to approve the motion to amend the motion. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay, that motion passes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. Okay, so now back to the original motion.
Now you approve.
No, back to the motion, I need another motion to approve.
No, it's already pending.
No, I need another motion to approve the original motion.
No, the motion is already pending. The amended is already pending. So it's pending in the-
Ellen?
Yeah.
Okay, so just another voice vote.
Amended motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so just another voice vote. Okay. Thanks, John.
I wasn't sleeping that day, all right?
Okay, so all, all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that motion carries. Five ayes, no nays, two absents.
And just, this will come back for a second reading at the next meeting.
superintendent's agenda action items, there are two donations. Would anyone like to take one of the, we'll do these one at a time. Karen?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Sandberg Middle School PTA in an amount of $3,870 for 42 chairs and a water bottle filling station. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy 8:80, gifts to the district.
I'll second. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
So we thank the Sandberg PTA, as well as the parents in the community for donating to our schools.
Need a roll call?
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent, Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That motion passes. Next donation. Go ahead, Emily, thanks.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the donation from the district to a 5 foundation, on behalf of the York Student Enrichment Team, in the amount of $24,000.
I second the motion.
Uh, thank you very much to the District 205 Foundation for the generous donation and for YSET for the work that they do, because it is very important work. Do you want to say anything else about it? Nope.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Um, Dr. Harrell, Dr. Studen?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct, Dr. Harrell, thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent, Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Collins is he absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Like, that motion passes. Moving on to action on closed session item, employment of employee. So I'd like to read a description of the action before we, before we read the motion. The board delayed consideration of changes to Superintendent Dave Purno's compensation pending his decision to retire or accept an extension of his contract, which the board was ready to offer. Following his January 15, 2015 announcement of retirement at the end of this school year, the board considered and reached a consensus to, one, increase Mr. Purno's base salary for the 2014-15 school year by 2% to $226,513.56. And two, as has been done for all central office administrators, beginning with the 2013-14 school year, pay the employee, employee contribution to the Illinois Teacher Health Insurance Security Fund, which was .97% of TRS earnings for the 2013-14 school year, and is 1.02% for the 2014-15 school year. These changes are following the superintendent's contract without amending or extending the contract, and are the result of the positive evaluation of the superintendent's performance for the 2013-14 school year, and his continued excellent performance this school year. So I need a motion.
Okay. I move to authorize the following with respect to the compensation of Superintendent Dave Purno, to increase the superintendent's base annual salary by 2% from $222,72.12 to $226,513.56, with a resulting increase of $4,441.44 divided into equal installments and paid over the pay periods remaining in the 2014-15 school year. To reimburse the superintendent for his contributions to the Illinois Teacher Health Insurance Security Fund at the rate of .97% for the 2013-14 school year, and at the rate of 1.02% for the 2014-15 school year, up to the first full payroll in March of this year and thereafter, to make the THIS contribution on behalf of the superintendent directly to the Illinois teachers' retirement system, or as otherwise required by law for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year at the rate of 1.02% rate. And authorize the president to communicate these changes in writing to the superintendent for his acceptance.
For a second.
I second that motion. Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent, Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That motion passes. Okay. Oh, yes. Go ahead.
So we would just like to thank you, Dave, for your continued contribution to the district, and wish you were staying. But we appreciate the fact that you've worked with us through some of these, these quirks. And thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Board communications, are there any updates? Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the PTA Council for a very successful community legislative forum last evening. We had a great turnout, we had our state senators and house representatives there. Very good success all around, support from the district from many different facets. It was flawless, and so we thank the employees for putting that together and participating. And thanks once again to the PTA Council for, you know, communicating this, putting it together, having very good questions to the legislators, very informative to the community, and then thanks to the community and the audience participation, asking the questions.
So I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters too, for giving a very good introductory speech, really explaining the different facets of government. I, I thought that was really informative, so, thank you.
And I would be remiss to thank, yeah, the League of Women Voters and Jan, who has supported us for over 20 years here in District 205, and did a wonderful job last night of clarifying the different elected officials and, and how the community can advocate, as well as Peg Agnos, our executive director with the Lend organization, who did an outstanding job as well.
Anything else for board communications? Okay. Upcoming meetings, Wednesday, February 25th, Finance Committee, Wednesday, March 4th, Learning and Teaching Committee, Tuesday, March 10th, Board of Education meeting. Wow, there are another Finance Committee meeting, March 17.
Thank you.
March 19th- March 19th. You can, you have to talk to Chris Bloom. March 19th, Performance Management Committee meeting, and March 24th, Board of Education meeting, all here in the District 205 Center. Okay, that leads to adjournment. This meeting adjourned, is adjourned.